So I'd like to call the meeting to order, City of Pacifica Study Session. I guess first we'll call to order and roll call.
Councilmember Vatalas?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember DeGree?
Present.
Mayor Protem Keener?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here.
Present.
Okay, so the one and only item on the study session is a study session on short-term rental regulations, so I guess...
Do you do the flag or something like that?
No, it's a study session.
Okay.
We don't do it for the study sessions, huh?
Yeah, no, no. If we want to, we can, but it's not on the agenda, so it might be illegal.
Oh.
You never know.
Or not.
So, I guess staff report?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Tina Waremeister, Planning Director, and I just want to turn the presentation over to Rob Smith, Assistant...
Is this being filmed live?
Yes.
I mean, well, filmed live but broadcast live?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks, sorry, I just didn't know.
It's okay. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rob Smith, who will be presenting the summary of the staff report to you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Assistant Planner Robert Smith, and I'll be giving the presentation on the short-term rental study session this evening.
Can we put your microphone a little closer?
So the presentation will cover a number of topics, including the background for the content of the discussion, the impacts from these types of uses, possible regulatory options and considerations, and we'll finally seek direction from the council. The existing zoning ordinance does not conceive of short-term rental accommodation, and as such, the use is considered prohibited. The state law and Pacifica Municipal Code would, however, allow the city to implement tax collection, and we'll go into that in more detail later in the presentation. The city was lucky enough to be included in the 21 Elements Report that was completed for San Mateo County.
I just want to ask a process question. Since this is kind of a lengthy presentation and rather meaty subject, would you want us to ask a question if it's pertinent to that slide, or do you want us to wait till the end of the presentation?
Yeah, I think it would be convenient if you have questions as we go through the presentation, that would be useful to ask them.
Okay, so are we there on that? Okay, good. Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Absolutely, no problem. So the 21 Elements Report that was completed for San Mateo County in 2015 identified that these uses were being operated, and it also identified the rapid expansion of this market sector. The implication from the report is the expansion was driven by the professionalization of this market, so they defined that as operators who listed properties for 90 days or more per year. And although the 21 Element Report provides good data, one of the challenges for decision-makers is actually the lack of available evidence to show the impacts of the short-term rental market on cities. Larger cities such as San Francisco reports have suggested that the number of evictions have increased due to short-term rentals. In New York, for example, they estimate that there's a loss of affordable housing due to short-term rental accommodation. So other reports, however, suggest that these impacts aren't as significant, and that impacts generally are still quite small. During the rent stabilization hearings, the council heard anecdotal evidence of apartment conversions to permanent short-term rental accommodation. So as we mentioned earlier, the city has the ability through its existing ordinances to collect transient occupancy tax. There's also the opportunity for the existing business license process to provide an opportunity to register and track operators. And should the city wish to use this approach, then that could be implemented without the need for a ballot measure. And currently, at the 12% rate of TOT tax, this could be generating as much as $160,000 per year.
Excuse me, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Okay, sorry, thanks. That's it.
So the $160,000 is obviously dependent on the length of stays, the amount of rates that are being charged, and the number of short-term rental units within the city. And there's examples from around the state and also the Bay Area that show the variety of regulatory approaches that may be included. So Santa Monica, for example, they have an owner registration process where the owners are required to be present onsite for the entirety of the guest stay. Napa, for example, has additional requirements for fire and building inspections each year. San Francisco, for example, has safeguards against the loss of affordable housing. And the regulatory options can be broken down into a number of different approaches. Obviously, the opportunity to not regulate tax-only, regulate either in a light or heavy manner, or prohibit entirely. And there are a number of, a broad range of responses that are available to the usually identified impacts of short-term rental accommodation. And obviously, the degree of these responses are relevant to the regulatory approaches that the city chooses to take. It's also important to consider the impact or the protection for users of this accommodation. So a good example would be the opportunity for equal access to ensure that rental units are, wherever possible, made accessible, meet ADA requirements. And in terms of impacts on the hotel industry more broadly, San Mateo County is one of the highest occupancy rates throughout the country at 85%, so the impact is arguably not necessarily going to have a significant impact. And there's obviously the cost to the city of this regulation, but also the potential for cost recovery. So I wondered at this point whether it was a good opportunity for the councilmembers or mayor to ask questions if you had them, maybe to seek public comment if there are questions from the public also.
When Tina and I met earlier today, she'd also suggested taking any public comments... Oh, there's more people out there. Public comments in this, so if you are going to do a public comment, can you please fill out a card? Right now, I have one, but I see Mike White raising his wave in his hand, so Tiger, you want to go first? The yellow cards are in the back of the room. Tiger?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Tiger Jastrow, Big Stick of Pacifica. So with the recent storms in Texas, a friend of mine posted a bit on social media about how Airbnb implemented their disaster response program, which they've had in place apparently since 2012. In a couple of weeks, we're going to vote on whether or not to become a sanctuary city, which may or may not affect funding for a seawall. And if we don't have funding for a seawall, or we do have funding and it goes down before it gets built, that could come in handy for our own community. Or if there's a disaster on the coast elsewhere, or an earthquake for that matter, heaven only knows where people might be affected, and having this resource in our town might be a very valuable asset. So I'm aware that at least Airbnb has that emergency response protocol in their business model. That being said, as I'm driving through town, the potholes are my constant concern. To my mind, the state of the roads are kind of a bellwether for the physical well-being of our community, and so every dollar of taxes we can get to begin healing, not just the roads, but like I said, the seawall needs to be properly built also. So TOT tax is a major yay, and please figure out a way to start getting taxes from short-term rentals, the sooner the better. As I was reading through about professional operators, I don't know what that means technically, but to my mind, that meant that that might affect housing if a professional operator is big enough that they can buy some of our housing stock and turn it strictly into short-term rental. That occurs to me as not a good idea, so it would be... What would be a good idea is figuring out how to keep professional operators that, at least in my concept, are that big from taking away our housing stock, which lends itself to the idea of hosts as being permanent residents. I liked that idea when I read through it. And unhosed residents having a limited number of days that they could rent out their properties as short-term rentals seemed like a good idea, again, so that we don't lose rental stock. It makes sense if a regular permanent residence rents out their space for some amount of time a year. It doesn't make sense that we take the few houses we have and turn them into hotels instead of places for our people to live. And then if we were to have any kind of educational material for tourists when they use short-term rental, something about earthquakes would probably be helpful. And those are the specifics I have. Thank you.
Okay, next I have Sheldon Jafar?
Jaffe.
Sorry, sorry about that, Jaffe.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you to the legal staff. Really quick, I agree with just about everything the previous speaker said. I never understood why we don't collect the... Why we don't have a deal with Airbnb. I understand they're happy to collect taxes. They certainly have for me when I've stayed in other places. I think limiting on unhosed rentals makes sense. I had a couple of really quick questions for the legal staff, if I may. I'm a little confused. You say that Airbnb or short-term rentals are already prohibited, yet that's one of the options you offered to the council. I'm not really clear, do you mean the council should, could expressly prohibit it rather than implicitly, Mr. Smith? Or Ms... I'm sorry?
We are not able to have a dialogue with you, but you can ask your questions, and if... And then council can have us respond.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
That's kind of the law. Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, well, so I'm unclear. I don't know if the council is clear on that, and I was wondering if a person wanted to look at the ordinance, if the council could ask... The council could ask council for the applicable ordinances if members of the community wanted to look at that. But I think the biggest thing would be taxes are a good thing. I know when I stay in Airbnbs in other cities, Airbnb collects the tax, and I presume remits it to the municipality, or that the municipality has a way of making sure it does that. So, good way to make money. I think it's good for the homeowners. And that's it.
Thank you. Next is Jeffrey Cindick or Cinder?
Cinder, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jeffrey Cinder, homeowner here in Pacifica. I live in Valamore. I had the very unfortunate experience of living right next door to an Airbnb. Earlier in your comments or an email I received, it says that it's not currently allowed, but believe me, it's happening right now. As it is where I live in Valamore on Angelita Avenue, you can't even find a parking space because of all of the potholes, and to have more cars coming in. And there was a parade of cars coming in, parking in front of my house, so they could go next door and using my driveway to go in and out so they could partake in the Airbnb rental next door. Parade of strangers, why would I want that? I don't collect any tax at all or any benefit. I kind of worry about safety and who are these people? And I think it's going to increase the rents for permanent renters, too. And I just don't understand why I need to live next to a commercial establishment. I can't turn my garage into a body shop, and I don't understand why someone could make their house into a hotel. And I'm strongly against it. And just one last point, we have 85% occupancy rate here in the county of San Mateo for hotels. Well, that's not 100%, and how many hotel owners are saying, yes, they want to have Airbnb here? So I thank you, and I am definitely against it.
Thank you. Next is...
Could I ask you a question? Were there... The place next door to you?
Yes.
Were they engaging in, you know, partying or something like that? I mean, why could you tell why?
No, I wouldn't. I haven't heard... I didn't hear any loud noise, but interesting, the driveway of the Airbnb, the owner kept it clear, kept the front of her house clear, and directed the Airbnb participants to park in other areas. So no noise complaints yet, but I think that's just a matter of time, you know?
So the owner was a live-in owner?
Yes, it's a live-in owner who spends time in the trucky area also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But permanent resident of Pacifica.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wolfgang Fernandez?
Good evening. I'm a resident in Pacifica, and I appreciate the opportunity the council gives me to make some comments on the idea of Airbnb in the community. I travel a lot for my work, and I've used Airbnbs in many places around the world, and my experience has always been very positive. My experience locally also has been positive. I think that Airbnb brings, I mean, brings all kinds of people, but it does bring families because families are looking for homes to stay with children. So, I mean, there are issues that always comes when you have more people coming through a neighborhood, and those can be addressed, I think, very easily through different possibilities. But I think that it's good for our community to have families to come and visit during the summertime. I think it would be a very good source of tax, as has been reported here this evening. So I would like to encourage the city to approve the use of Airbnbs in the community, tax it accordingly, and maybe even, you know, provide some regulations. Always need regulations to live in harmony, but it's not something that will be a huge burden for the community. Thank you.
I don't have any other cards. Mike Bell? I know you wanted to say something, so no problem. And there's another gentleman out there. If you... No? Okay. Now, this is a study session, so it's like a lot less formal than a regular meeting. So, but we did want to do the three minutes just to be sure everybody had a chance to talk.
Well, that was my first question. Are we necessarily limited to three minutes? Do we have to be?
We're kind of doing the three minutes just to be sure everybody's fair, and then maybe if we have some time later, we can open it up again.
All right. Thanks for having us. First of all, I've been doing VRBO for five years now, and I got all my original input from Chris Rankin. I think most of you guys know who Chris Rankin is. And he also has a VRBO on Peter Point right now. If you go down to the business office and ask anybody who's been there a while, I'm the nutty guy that comes in every year and asks, "How do I pay taxes?" Because I guess people don't normally do that, but I always try to pay taxes, and I'm always told, "Well, you know, we don't really have a way to do that," and blah, blah, blah. So anyway, I try every year, though, because I, you know, I'm all for paying taxes to support the city and do maintenance. I hadn't even thought of directing some money towards the seawall. It's a good idea. So mostly, I just want to characterize, and darn it, I'm going to run out of time, but I wanted to characterize what VRBO is, at least for me. I've had people stay at my place over the last five years from Italy, Brazil, France, Portugal, England, Germany, Finland, Sweden, Australia, New Zealand, Denmark, Ireland, and Egypt. I think I've left out a few. Most of those people, or at least half of them, are all returns. They love it here. And all of them ask me when they're here, you know, "What do you do in Pacifica? Where's a good restaurant? Where do you get some coffee?" You know, art galleries, things like that. And I not only give recommendations, I also give gift certificates to many of the people. And I'm always recommending, you know, Nyx and Nonas when they were there, Grandeur, El Toro, Gorillas, coffee shops, darn. All the trails, bookstores, Sanchez Art Center, Seabowl, Tam's, Oceania Market, swimming at Oceania High, tennis at Oceania High, 24-hour fitness center, just to name a few. There's also a huge domestic draw from literally every corner of the United States. Some people have come here, and they actually have seen the ocean for the first time in their lives, and they look out there, and then they see whales. It blows our minds. And I'm not even able to get to really the heart of what I wanted to talk about, but I'll just try to say it quickly here. The medical research hospitals, UCSF, CPMC, and Stanford, all send patients my way because of the healing nature of the ocean, the air around here, the paved pathway for people to walk and exercise and recover. This is a real asset to Pacifica. I do want to speak again because there's other things I want to talk about.
We'll open it up later.
All right. Can I ask you a question, Mike?
Sure.
What kind of accommodation do you have? Is it a separate apartment or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, downstairs.
All right.
Yeah, and I've had them for five years, and it's all... They're all disability whatever-enabled. And, yeah, we've had, what's that? Yeah, EDA. And we've had heart transplants, lung transplants, kidney transplants, spinal surgeries. I mean, it's a long list of people who would otherwise never be able to, you know, enjoy the ocean like they do. It's a very, very healing experience for people.
Yeah, what a unique thing. And is it available year-round?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's pretty much... Well, the only low times are about maybe February and March, otherwise holidays, summers... They don't know our summers are foggy, and I don't tell them. But, yeah, the holidays really are quite popular here. They love to spend Christmas on the ocean.
And this is your... You host it, right? You're the primary... This is your primary residence?
Correct.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Have you ever had any issues or noise complaints from neighbors?
I've never had one. One of the things that I do, my highest priority in the entire business, if that's what you want to call it, I don't really call it a business, but my highest priority is that my neighbors are all okay with it. And that's just the way it is. And if any... I've never had to tell anybody to be quiet or do something this way or that way, but they all park, you know, in my carports, and they're all very respectful. I have not had any issues whatsoever with any of the neighbors, and nothing like this gentleman described, nothing.
So your parking's onsite?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All onsite, self-contained?
Yep, all onsite, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that wants... We'll probably open it up later for questions, you know, and stuff. So I forget who asked the question, but maybe the answer to the question of the gentleman...
Sure, so that is a good question about the... What we're asking, and it would be whether or not the council wants to affirmatively ban the uses.
Okay, so...
If that is an option that is under consideration. So right now, the zoning ordinance is... Does not speak to them, and it's a permissive zoning ordinance, so therefore, if it's not discussed, the use is not permitted.
Okay. I hope that answers the question of the gentleman that asked it. Okay, so is there any questions from council to staff?
To follow up on that, Tina, so... If it's not permitted, does that mean that we should, if we want to keep these Airbnbs and VRBOs and so on, that we should modify the municipal code so that we establish some permits for them? I mean, will that be necessary?
So if, for example...
Say like a tax-only...
Yeah, if the council selected tax-only option, I would recommend that we also come back and make it expressly permitted, or so we clarify that, so there's no confusion in the future.
Okay. And what about business licenses? Is that the same as a permit or...
So it's a little... It's a little different. So business license is obtained through the finance department, and, you know, a hotel or an Airbnb, not only would they be registering to pay their TOT tax, but they'd also have a business license.
Yeah, okay.
Here's your...
I have a few questions up front. In the staff summary, one of the sentences is that the city possesses the authority and tools to ensure proper regulation. Have we done an evaluation of what tools are required, and thinking in terms of like monitoring, regulating, collecting? Is there PPD involved?
So there are so many different options under each of the main category options for council that we wanted to get some feedback from you all this evening, and then we were probably going to need, depending on how this is concluded, need to come back to the council with some more information, because a big chunk of what you're missing, because we really didn't know what option you'd select, is the fiscal impact.
Sure.
So how much would effective regulation cost, depending on what you guys like to do, and how do we pay for that through cost recovery?
So that sentence is actually just not really correct, right? We don't currently possess the tools. The staff summary in the original output during that 612 meeting, page seven?
Packet page seven?
Staff summary, it's the last sentence. Is it the packet number or the other number? It's the council agenda summary report. It was the one dated 612. You didn't do an update since then, right? Right, yeah.
We...
Yeah, but I don't think there's been an update. I think they just updated the date, right?
We probably changed... We did do a little bit of, not a lot of substantive changes, but maybe the page numbers have changed.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure it was... It's just above direction from council in my pocket. The other question I have was... You don't have to answer that, that's okay, because I understand what the request is, and it seems like you're going to have to get more information in order to be able to answer that question anyway. So to further to your question, John, would this require a general plan update? And I know also that it has to comply with local coastal plan. Would that become part of the local coastal plan that we're undergoing currently?
So depending on the direction that we receive from the city council, we will analyze whether or not it needs any policy changes, particularly in light of the memo that we received from the Coastal Commission, as well as any language in the existing general plan.
Okay. And in terms of the business license, it would be the same rules as currently exist? So per year?
Yes, I don't see that changing, and I'll... Yes, it would be the same.
And then what about fire inspection? Would... Are these places required to undergo fire inspections like any other business?
We... I don't know if that is an option or if that is something that will happen automatically, just like any other business, so I'd have to check with the fire department on that.
Yeah, and I know when I rented, my landlord just made sure that he always was, you know, he took care of all the fire stuff, which was... he took care of all the fire stuff, which wasn't awesome. And I just want to make sure that somebody feels safe enough if we were to move forward with some of this stuff, that fire inspection was part of it. Not necessarily saying I want to add more costs to the, to the person who is renting the place, but just something to consider. Those are my questions for now. I'll hold off and see what everyone else has.
Does agree?
Yeah, I didn't quite hear all of what you said, but I had a question on, because we brought this up before, if we could just clarify it again, it's on packet page four. The city's permissive zoning system, so it, it's, because you, we use the word permissive, it gets kind of confusing. So because it's permissive, we're prohibited. So can you kind of explain that a little bit so we can keep that in mind as we're deliberating?
So...
Right now, we can get taxed even though...
So there, there's different sections of the municipal code that we're referring to this evening. So under the zoning ordinance, the way our code is drafted, it's, the simplest way to think about it is if a use is not expressly discussed, it is not allowed. And so our zoning ordinance does not contemplate short-term rental uses and so is arguably not permitted. A different section of the municipal code regulates business slices, business licensing and TOT taxes. And in the definitions in that title, we can, it, it does, can be interpreted to cover short-term rentals. And so our legal counsel has indicated to us that we would not need to amend those sections of the municipal code if the council directs us to start collecting taxes.
And the business license part would also be involved in that?
Yes.
Okay. So that permissive language that we use that actually refers to zoning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sue Van Alms?
First of all, I don't think, I really don't think there are as many in town as people think, because VRBO, HomeAway are the same company and a lot of people, I think, post on multiple sites, because it's a lot easier to post on multiple sites and you'd have to go through each individual one to see if they overlapped. And because they don't give addresses, it's not always easy to do that. I've known, and I was curious about the fiscal impact and I know you don't have that because you don't know what we're going to decide. I think tax is extremely important, but I'm also concerned about the staff time that it'll take, whether the companies Airbnb and VRBO can collect tax for us and send us a tax would be the easiest way. Certain cities had very high charges to do Airbnb or VRBO, like a thousand dollar registration fee, I think that's prohibitive. I know various people in town who have vacation rentals. One person was going to lose their house and they decided to do a vacation rental. It saved his house. He would have lost his house if it wasn't for, for this program. I also know a person who got a divorce and she had to rent out part of her house because that way she could keep her house, otherwise she couldn't have kept her house either. So I do see definite advantages to having it. I think there are big positives, the people who come here from all over the place to stay and really enjoy our town and spend money while they're here, because they're on vacation. And they do spend money when they're here. I definitely want to charge the tax, but I'll have more to say probably later.
I def, like everybody else here, definitely want to charge the tax. However, I do think we should look at a business license, you know, form of registration when they come in. But I also would like to look at and check out, can we, for, if we do allow, which has yet to be determined, unhosted, I would like to be sure that we get some fees from the management company that would be taking the place of the host. You know, because they're the one that would come and do the, you know, clean it, make, change the sheets and everything else if the owner's there. I also really want to have an in-depth description of conversions. I think, and maybe actually have percentage, like, you know, two-unit building, you know, you can't do, you can do one, one unit can be, that'd be Airbnb, three units, Airbnb four or more, no more than like 30%, because I do, I'm concerned that the area most prone to it, West Shore Park, is also where most of our affordable housing is. So I would really like to have a detailed conversation about, you know, conversions. I think that's something we need to deal with. I also really want to have a discussion, and I don't know if we can do that tonight, on, because I remember when you're on city council, just like your own account, you get all kinds of spam from companies looking to sell the city stuff. And I actually read one and it was a company that would do all the work for us, you know, looking to see if people are, you know, registered, et cetera, like that. So I would like some information to look at a management company instead of hiring staff, because the legacy costs for staffs with PERS and benefits and everything else could really be quite heavy. So I would really like to look at that issue, private version there, and then conversions. And then I think maybe we need to start, we should talk based on that one gentleman's concerns about some sort of parking. Maybe we actually, could, could we have a sign that the next-door neighbors could put up Airbnb parking prohibited per municipal code and the cops could actually go and find people or, I don't know, that's something I guess we'd have to look up.
How would you know? How would you know whose car it was? Could be a neighbor across the street. You can't really protect the front of your...
You kind of get to know the car, you know the cars in your neighborhood, pretty much.
No, you can't protect your parking spots.
Well, I'm just throwing it out for discussion, okay? Don't talk till I call on you, I'm the chair.
Wait. This is a study session, not a formal meeting.
I'm only, I'm only kidding. So, and now, Deirdre has her light on, just like she's supposed to.
I'm not, you know, I just, there's so much to this and everybody brings some personal experience, right? I've stayed in Airbnbs, actually, my husband rented an Airbnb in the Santa Cruz Mountains for a wedding and it was a camper. And that was fine for him, wouldn't have been okay for me, but the host lived in the main house and he stayed in the camper van. And it was really great for just one night and she drove him to the wedding and picked him back up and it was interesting, you know, but those are the things I want to think about here, because we would have that potential. I mean, there's a lot of campers around here, right? I also am concerned about, I'm going to talk about concerns first, the kind of structural integrity of the neighborhoods. I know Pedro Point is one of those neighborhoods that a lot of people like to VRBO or Airbnb because of the views, the proximity to the state beach, there's a lot of walkable things there. But I've heard reports from that neighborhood that, that the, the Airbnbs and VRBOs are changing the structure of the neighborhood. I live next to someone who doesn't do like one-year leases. I think they allow month-to-month leases, which is fine. But for me, as a homeowner right next door, I'm concerned about who's coming and going. You know, one guy's a Lyft driver, so he's coming and going all hours of the night. I've got children and I'm concerned about who our neighbors are. I try to get to know everyone and I'm getting to know everyone, you know, every three and four months. And if I had an Airbnb next to me, now I also have an in-law unit, so if anything ever happened to my husband, I might need to do something like that. So I would like the option to be able to do that too. But like you said, I would like to make sure, I really liked what I heard, Mike, that you make sure that your neighbors are the most accommodated. So the other thing is, we're going to be discussing accessory dwelling units and one of the things that has come up for them is the parking situation. And I believe that, I believe that the, the parking is going to be such that they, it will be allow, allowable, an accessory dwelling, it will be allowable on streets less than 26 feet wide. So from my perspective, that would also mean Airbnbs wouldn't be allowed or such on streets less than 26 feet wide, from the planning commission's perspective of, you know, extra people, more people being there. It's just something to think about. I'm just giving everyone more.
For more than?
Less than, did I say more than? Less than 26 feet wide, so am I, am I correct?
Right, so the planning commission's recommendation to the city council, which you're scheduled to hear on the 11th, is they were concerned from a health safety perspective about emergency vehicle access to neighborhoods with very narrow streets. So streets less than 26 feet in width, the actual pavement, not the right-of-way, cannot have a detached or accessory dwelling unit that's built onto the house. State law prohibits us from, from not allowing ADUs built within the footprint on any street, but, but for those that are less than 26 feet in width, the two, the two types I just mentioned would be prohibited. And that's a recommendation.
That's a recommendation, so my, I thought, my, my point is that this is, this similar issue has been studied. And of course, I'm on board with collecting taxes. I think anybody that would be in support of this is. And I actually think there's more people than we know doing this. And I'm concerned about conversions. I think we really do need to look at that, you know, in, in larger apartment buildings too, right? Losing any affordable housing. And I know like the acceptance of some sort of an ADU zone update might accommodate that, but are we just canceling it out? So I just kind of want to throw all those things out there. It's like a big vomit of concern and support.
And just, just one section, again, this is a, this is an area where the city has discretion, so this is a recommendation, council could agree or disagree, but the planning commission's recommendation to you is to not allow ADUs to be short-term rentals, because the state law's intent was to create more permanent rental housing, not to create more vacation housing.
Sure, that, that makes sense, but then what if you have a hosted, you have an ADU in the back and then you have somebody who's doing a hosted and they've got somebody coming in, staying in their room for the night, you know, and they're also living there. So that's the type of situation where, you know, and, and my husband, actually, when he went to the, when he stayed in the trailer, the woman had like three rooms rented out, so they all went in and had breakfast together and there was, he's sitting there with like four other people having a nice breakfast. They had all rented a room and he rented the camper. So you, you could potentially have, and there was four extra cars there. Now, they're in the woods and they don't have those issues, but, but we will.
We do, yeah.
I actually do think, don't we have an ordinance already that if you have a camper, you can't sleep in it overnight if it's in your driveway or something?
Yeah, so I think that there's going to be, if, if we, if you do decide to allow them and regulate them, there'd be ways for us to draft the ordinance to address that situation.
Yeah, and we do have that ordinance.
Because I know this guy, the guy that was on Roberts Road for so long, we were having issues with.
Yeah, the blue whale?
Yeah.
So first of all, the, as it stands now, we could collect TOT from virtually everybody except maybe Airbnb, which would require some kind of negotiation with, with the company itself, rather than, because the fees go back to the company first and then get paid to the owner.
So I don't know if Lorenzo has any insight on, on how the, the tax is collected?
Well, our taxes are collected directly from the establishments. They file a TOT return 30 days after the close of their business. Basically, they fill out a form, explain to us what the rooms, how many rooms were occupied, and various other calculations, and then they remit that form to us typically every 30 days.
But, oh, do you have something to add?
So I also understand, and unfortunately, we weren't able to have the city attorney's office attend tonight, but that there are other platforms like Airbnb that because of their model, it's harder to get them to collect the tax. And so we may need to approach somebody like Airbnb and, and actually enter into an agreement with them to do that for us. There's also, I think this is probably somebody that was contacted, that contacted the mayor, there's also an industry for regulation that's cropped up around this. So cities hire these agencies that do the, the hard work, and I think it's, it probably takes a lot of time, of figuring out what the address is of these rentals, because they don't, at least on Airbnb, they don't put, put it right up there, so that you can send the owner, you know, a notice of violation or hey, you need to come in and pay your taxes or whatever we need to do, depending on the regulations that council wants to implement.
Yeah. But as it stands now, I mean, if, if we had, you know, infinite legwork available, we would be able to collect the tax, the TOT tax from everybody except Airbnb.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, but will the cost to the city be greater than the tax collected? That's, that's, that's one issue.
Not to interrupt you, but why would we be able to collect it, I assume when you say everybody, VRBO and everybody else, but not from Airbnb?
It has to do, and I'm not, I don't know if I'm the best to explain this, but it has to do with their business model. And that Airbnb is stating that they're simply offering a space, like a Craigslist, for you to put your ad up and that the transaction is strictly between the homeowner and the tenant and that they are not involved in the transaction. And I think that there's other platforms that have a different model and they're able to collect the taxes. But I, you know, this is, just seems to be continually in flux and I think Airbnb is softening their position on that, particularly with some of their bigger cities like San Francisco you've seen.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that the tenant pays Airbnb and Airbnb then pays the landlord or hotelier or what have you. But just to continue on this, so if, would the, if, if we recognize that all the VRBOs, let's say, were actually hotels, which is what they are, basically according to our municipal code, right? Would they have to be rezoned?
We would need to amend our code to, to make that a type of use that's permitted in a residential district.
Okay, yeah.
So I would not recommend changing from a residential district for, to like a, you know, a commercial district of some sort, but to amend what's permitted in a residential district.
Yeah, so, so we would, we would require them to get a permit and a business license.
That is something that we need direction from the council on. So there's, there's the light regulation, so you, you, business license, TOT tax, and no, no other permits, right? You're just registered by, by virtue of coming in and getting your business license.
Uh-huh.
If you wanted more regulation, we could have a, a, a separate registration process or concurrent registration process with your business license, where you also, you know, sign up to get fire inspection regularly. You know, you sign that you're going to do whatever else the council would like, all the way up to some cities require some sort of discretionary permit for these. So there's a large, there's a, there's a large menu of options.
But the Coastal Commission requires a permit, is that right?
The Coastal Commission...
Coastal development permit? They say that short-term rentals are a development.
So the Coastal Commission considers it... So, the coastal commission considers this an intensification of use, and so, they believe that it is a, considered what the broad definition of development under the Coastal Act. And so, what I, how I read their memo is that we would need to amend our LCP to address these in whatever manner we're, we're thinking is, is going to be appropriate. And it's clear from their memo that they favor regulation in the coastal zone and not a ban, because they feel that it's affordable visitor accommodation.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so, they're, they're not necessarily mandating permits. Okay.
Right.
Can we limit how many short-term rentals there are in various neighborhoods? And I'm thinking especially of Pedro Point and West Shiret Park.
I think you can. I think that that type of regulation is difficult for staff to enforce. Because it's, you know, who, who, who gets the permits, who doesn't? The fairness in that. So, I think that if the desire is to take into consideration that the, for lack of a better term, the density of, of short-term rentals, I think, I think it would be good for staff to go back and figure out a, a way to accomplish that, but in a manner that's enforceable, or easier to enforce.
Okay. I, I, I would be in favor of staff looking into that, at least, some, if there is a simple way to enforce that sort of thing. Because I think there is a potential problem in those two areas, neighborhoods, I mean. Parking, and I, I think you've raised that issue. And it, it seems to me, again, in Pedro Point for sure, and probably West Shiret Park, parking is already pretty tight. And it might, well, let's put it this way. What sort of consequences would there be for, you know, staff time to having some sort of parking ordinance, I guess, for short, short-term rentals?
So, the, what we could do fairly easily is draft regulations that say, if you have so much parking on-site, your, your occupancy is going to be adjusted accordingly. I think where it becomes difficult is if you set expectations. So, neighbors surrounding an Airbnb that maybe has a single-car driveway here in, in West Shiret Park, understand that there's a very, very limited occupancy. But then the tenant comes with a big group on a Saturday. And so, if the expectation, and if the council, council's expectation is that there'd be some level of enforcement in that situation, we, as staff, our job would need to go back and figure out how that can be done. I mean, it's not realistic to say that the police are going to respond. We don't have code enforcement working on the weekend. So, perhaps an option in that situation would be that we craft regulations that require management companies, or that there is, either the owner or the caretaker needs to be within, you know, needs to respond to these, these types of situations.
Yeah.
So, it can't just be, I don't know if it's realistic in those situations for it to be completely on the city to enforce.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Suverano?
Did you want to speak, Keith?
Send me.
Well, going back a few minutes, I just have a little bit different take on Mayor Protem's question about being able to apply the transient occupancy tax to Airbnb units. If the city were to allow short-term rentals, I believe our position would be, and I have not talked this over specifically with the city attorney, but the city's position, I believe, would be that all short-term rentals, whether Airbnb or not, would be subject to transient occupancy tax. Airbnb may challenge that. We know that they had a settlement with the city of San Francisco. And, but at the same time, just because it's Airbnb, and they take a different approach to what their corporate model is, doesn't mean that we would not look at it as being applicable to our TOT ordinance. So, I think they would all apply. We may have a legal issue, but we know that, that Airbnb has settled that with other cities in the, in the recent past.
And, and just to clarify, it, it would apply to all short-term rentals? It's who is responsible for collecting it? Does the city have to go to the individual homeowners? Or does, do we just have to go to one entity, which is Airbnb, who collects it for us? So, that, that's, that's the question that we need to, to address.
Right, right. And for the, for Airbnb, I, I think that's your only option, is to, you have to go to them and say, okay, we want to collect our TOT tax, you know, pay up. But for VRBO, would it be possible for us to go to VRBO and say, you know, would you collect the tax for us?
And I don't have that answer now. I don't know if, if you do, yeah.
No, okay.
Suverano?
A couple of other things. These are people's homes, they're, they're personal residents. And of course, I believe in personal property rights. So, it seems to me you should be allowed to rent in your house, or rent your house, because people do rent their houses. If I had a five-bedroom house, and I live in one bedroom, I can rent out four other rooms on long-term as roommates, and I could have eight people living in my house. And I could have eight cars parked outside. And there is no regulation that would prevent that. So, it's sort of a fine line there. Because on, on long-term, there, there could be way more cars than on a short-term vacation rental. As far as occupancy on-site, I will say, I own a vacation rental in Arizona. I don't live there. I manage it myself. I, I have people who do the work for me. My daughter does live about four blocks away, so that helps. But I have cameras. I watch, two cameras on the outside, and I can watch the house at any time to see if there's excessive noise. I do have a lot of land, so people could park a lot of cars there, but I can watch to see if people are having parties there. And I'm still, even though I'm not even close to being on-site, I'm still managing that property from far away. So, the idea that we should only have Airbnbs that are occupied by a resident seems a little too stringent to me.
Yeah, so, so far, I agree with just about all the comments. I think we should act as a coastal city, and we are a coastal city, I think we should bear that in mind. And doing whatever we do keeps whatever we're agreeing to sustainable. And so, when we take taxes, I'm certainly eager to get the taxes and be fair about it, but are we earmarking some of that money for specific things? As we all know, potholes around here are pretty dreadful. Parking is also dreadful, and so is public transportation. So, the coastal commission, commission has laid out some good points of things to be concerned about when we're talking about these things in the coastal area. So, we might want to use some of that as a guideline, and determine if we want to use it for, out of that area as well. And then maybe we need to think about some phasing in. So, I'm very concerned about the parking and the public transportation, because you're not going to get rid of parking if you don't have some kind of transportation. And transportation seems like an impossible thing, and so is finding extra parking an impossible thing. But, but it can be, within our tracking on all areas, we have our climate action plan, we're pushing for public transportation, and all these things should be factored in, plus the fact that we're a coastal city, should be factored in and used as arguments when we go for monies and grants for that public transportation, and to alleviate parking. Otherwise, it's, it's going to be unfair to people. Also believe that residential areas are the domain of people who own their own place. And I wouldn't want to take away from private ownership by not being really careful about how we allow the short-term or long-term rentals. So, I think there, there must be some kind of a tipping point for that. And the coastal commission does lay out some of that protect-your-neighborhood type of things. So, I just think a residential area is still a residential area. Private owners have certain amount of things, regulations they can and can't do in spite of the fact that they own their own place. I think we need to keep that in balance when we're allowing other things, so that the other doesn't get more privileges than the actual homeowners. So, that's enough for now.
I just kind of had a curiosity, has, and again, you might have to look this up, but has there been any sort of model in terms of, instead of collecting a, you know, twelve percent transit occupancy tax, that the owner comes in, registers, and just pays a upfront twelve hundred dollars, you know, tax, and then they go their way, we go our way, and then we know we have the money, we have a little overhead? You know what I mean? Instead of enforcing how many nights, and less paperwork for everybody? Do you know if that model has ever been tried, or?
I have not heard of that, but we can ask.
And I'm just throwing the twelve hundred dollars out for discussion, you know, I mean, because that's roughly ten nights, or whatever. So, okay. Did you want to open it up for?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
So, there are some suggestions, or, or things that other towns have done. We see Santa Monica's example, Napa's example, and San Francisco's example. We're not San Francisco, and that would require hosts to be permanent residents. Also, I'm not so sure that's a great idea. And Napa and Santa Monica, I think we would like to be a little bit like that in terms of tourism. But the one that I see closest resembling anything that, that sounds sort of more like what we would be interested in would be Napa, which, I'm not saying all of this, but regulates vacation rentals through zoning, requiring a vacation rental permit, subject to fire department inspections, numerous restrictions on advertising, I don't know what really that means, but occupancy noise, and annual notice requirements. You know, you would need to notify your neighbors and whoever else. But the one thing that is not mentioned in there too, and that nobody has brought up tonight, which is a real, is something real that we should give direction on, is limiting the allowable length of stay for guests. One, one limits it to no less than thirty days, right? One of these places. And the other one is limit the total number of days in a year that a unit may be rented. Now, is it, there already a cap on that right now? I think for Airbnb, to qualify for, as an Airbnb, it has to be, you can't, as a single family, have more than a certain amount of days a year rented out? Or am I wrong?
So, I, I'm not speaking to Airbnb, just my understanding of, of state laws on some of this stuff. So, I don't, I think that, once you get past a thirty-day occupancy, then your unit's in a different category, you're, you're a tenant, essentially. So, I think that if that's not the intent of the owner, they, it's probably in their best interest to make sure that their stays are not longer than thirty days as well.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I mean, would, would, would this be something that we would be considering for just, I'm going to use the word incorrectly, but like a free-for-all, like however many days, for however long, for, I mean, I mean, obviously, it could be twenty-nine days, right? And you're fine, but you do that, you know, every single week, or every single month of the year? Or do we say, as a single-family home, you can only do this for six months, or something like that? And I know for some people, this is their source of income, so I want to also be considerate of that too. But it's something that we're asking to give, give direction on.
Right.
So, just, I was just going to ask, open it to the public again, just because it's a study session, is that okay? Or do you have a quick question?
I have, I have a comment here. So, I think that limits on how many days out of the year that you can rent, or, I'm using the word rent loosely, less than thirty days, are subject to inefficiency, you know? If, if you, if you're going to say, you can only rent your, rent your place out to VRBO for six months out of the year, but you've, you've entered into this model where it's a vacation rental, and it's, it's, it's avail, it's going to be available for rent all the time. I think it probably should be available for rent all the time. I think we have to be sort of honest about what kind of establishments we have and permit. So, okay.
And I, I just want to point out that after, or when, when the council's ready, we do have slides just to go through the questions that, that we also would like to get some feedback on.
Okay, so, I, being it's a study session, I was just going to reopen public comments, you know what I mean, a second time. And so, if everybody, anybody that wants to speak, we'll have the same rule, three minutes. So, I will call the names of the people that, you know, rather than submitting another card that spoke earlier, and if you want to, go ahead. Tiger?
Yeah, I'm also learning, as I'm being informed. When I heard Councilwoman Voderla suggests that a thousand dollars might be a prohibitive for, I think, permitting, I'm not sure that I agreed with that. If it's the startup cost of a business, and they might wind up with a lot more than a thousand dollars coming in over a very long period of time, a thousand dollars might actually not be much to ask for a permit if it winds up being a long-term business. And then after that, just in my mind, I keep trying to weigh the calculus of whether or not it might adversely affect our housing in a community where we're having a very long, and sometimes you had a discussion about how we can have affordable housing for the residents that are already here. And it's just this perpetual question mark in my mind of whether or not there is a ramification of taking away more affordable housing for our residents when that's already a serious issue for us. Not that I've necessarily heard anything tonight that makes me think we're heading down a bad road quickly. It's just a perpetual question mark in my mind. And that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Okay. Sheldon? Is he here? Okay, I can, you can come back later, okay. Jeffrey? He's, he's still, yeah.
So, I'm sitting here, I'm trying to hold the steam in here, I hear nothing about the neighbors and, and who live in Pacifica. If someone has a passion to show people from Finland and Spain and wherever, or Pacific Ocean, well, that's fine, then open up a bed and breakfast someplace. I don't believe that anyone's neighbors who, I don't believe that the neighbors are in, in favor of a Airbnb. You would never, I, I bet you, you would never let this go where, in order to approve an Airbnb, maybe have five... this go where, in order to approve an Airbnb, maybe have five or seven homeowners on the left side, on the right side, on the east side, on the south side, all agree to it. It'll never happen. It'll absolutely never happen. If someone is getting money for this service, and they have a romantic view of it, that's fine, but a business is a business. No one would allow strangers in a home that they own without taking money. So, it's a business. Let's not kid ourselves. Once again, if I have a romantic vision of fixing cars and having all the cars from Pacifica shiny without dents, I cannot open up a body shop in my garage. And I don't think this romantic notion of having people from around the world come here, that's all fine and good, but there are neighbors with kids and families. Someone else brought up the fact that it's nice that families come to visit. What about the families that have paid taxes, that go to schools, that live in the neighborhood? There's not, there cannot be one family that has two or three kids, they go to the local schools, they are not an Airbnb, they're not happy about this. Who are you kidding? You've got to be kidding me. It just, I'm a homeowner, so I'm lucky. But this other gentleman made a good point here, too. You're just going to push up the price of housing. That's all you're going to do. Because I bet an Airbnb is more profitable than having a home rented out the normal way. So, I think this is a techie trend that has gone too far, and I'd like to see us put a stop to it. Thank you.
Wolfgang?
As a homeowner, again, I would just, I want to affirm what I have said. Everything that I have heard so far has just encouraged me to think, yeah, that there are many good possibilities to regulate the excesses that could happen in a situation like this where you could have, just, you know, if your driveway has room for three cars, then you can park three cars and that's it, that kind of thing. So, to keep cars in driveways as opposed to in the streets, since the streets of Pacifica tend to be narrow. That's just an example of the multiple options that we have for simple regulations that, you know, are easy to carry out. So, as a homeowner, I want to encourage you to continue this discussion and really, yeah, think of it as a viable and a good option for our city. Thank you.
Mike Bell?
Same three minutes. So, I'll just address a couple of things that I was thinking about when I was sitting there. First of all, I've never had anybody visit that had more than one car, because they usually come in on an airplane, and they get a car, and so it's one car. And ironically, it's most of the Europeans who come in here, they don't want a car. They want to know, how do I get to BART? They've done their homework, and they love rapid transit and they use it. So, I don't know, I just, the parking thing, I know you can't ignore it, but I don't really get why that's an issue. As far as maintaining the fabric of the neighborhood, I think that, you know, I mean, we've all had bad neighbors. Anybody can be a bad neighbor. And I think that, and obviously, there's people who have short-term rentals that are bad neighbors too. And, you know, I think you might want to deal with that separately. I think it's a really bad idea to kind of just broad-brush that, because if you call it a business, which I guess you could, the only way you stay in business in this world is to provide good service and a good amenity and a good value. And that includes keeping peace in the neighborhood. So, I don't know. I don't think I'm the only person who has that thought about VRBO, but, you know, that's a big part of it. The, hmm. Well, I guess I just wanted to, I'll just continue on with what I wanted to talk about, is CPMC, Stanford, and UCSF, there's one more there. They have now gotten to the point where they are recommending people to come to my place, because they know that it's not over a bridge, in case there's some kind of bad reaction or something. And it's a very healing environment. And, you know, I had an experience recently that just, it really brought me to tears. This kid, the family was from Alaska, and their son was not wheelchair-bound, he was bed-bound. He couldn't even sit up. He was severely, severely disabled. And I built a ramp for him, and they went out on the deck every single day, and he looked at the birds and the whales and all that stuff. And the last day that he was there, you know, I went down, said goodbye to him, and thanked him for coming. And he grabbed my fingers and said something to me. It was not intelligible, but he said something to me. I found out later, his mom told me, that that's the first time he's ever made an attempt to physically or verbally connect with anybody other than his parents. And she said it's because he was happy. So, you know, these are things that are kind of the intangibles, that I think we've got to really realize. This isn't a hotel room, it's something different.
Hey, Remy Tan?
Hello, Remy Tan, Pacifica. Thanks for letting me speak. I wanted to kind of put input from a guest's point of view. We just came back from a trip in Europe. We stayed at hotels, we stayed at Airbnbs, and by far, the best experience we had on that trip was staying at Airbnbs. Because, you know, we got to know local people, our hosts, and they gave us pointers. We were not, you know, we were staying in, you know, some places quite a bit away from the city center, which is quieter, and, you know, and we ended up, you know, using the businesses nearby where our, you know, hosts' places were. And we saved a ton of money, because we went in the high season. It was very, very difficult to get hotels in a lot of places, and, you know, we used transit. And, you know, we basically, you know, contributed to a lot of the local businesses. And, you know, in Pacifica, you know, we've talked about for years and years, I've been here 20 years, about making this, you know, increasing tourism here. And here's, I think, a great opportunity for, you know, local residents to participate in increasing tourism, you know, by hosting overseas and, you know, out-of-area guests. And, you know, when they stay here, they will use the local stores, you know, Safeway all the way down to the mom-and-pop stores. So, increase our business. And, you know, every time San Francisco has a convention, they don't have enough hotel rooms. You know, we have limited hotel rooms here, so this is an opportunity for everybody to, you know, share the wealth in increased tourism and convention. So, you know, I think we can be smart about it, I think, you know, and, you know, we can, you know, charge a hotel tax or temporary occupancy tax, and actually this will help the city coffers. And Airbnb does that automatically with, you know, in the city of San Francisco, and it's a seamless process, you know, for both the hosts and the guests. So, I hope we, you know, do consider this in a positive light. Thank you.
And Bridget Duffy?
Hi. Sorry, I missed most of it. I'm trying to figure out what everybody's talking about, but I'm really, really glad that this is coming up. I didn't know it was coming up. But short-term rentals have a large part in what's happening with the rental situation in our fair city. And I even heard this straight from Senator Hill. When asked about it, he says, oh, well, you live in a beautiful place. What can you do? And it's true, we do live in a beautiful place, and lots of people want to come here. And it's a beautiful, serene, healthy environment, just like Mike was saying. We have a lot to offer. We could make a lot of money. By the way, Airbnb does not have to be the one that profits from all these short-term rentals, just a suggestion. I mean, all they have is a website. We could do a website. But basically, we have a community of people who are now being faced with having hotels every which way. A much better approach would be to designate an area of town, let's say this area of town possibly, since it is in danger of sea level rise, and make it an Airbnb community, Airbnb beach hut community. And therefore, you're not dealing with permanent residents in a disaster. It would be a completely different scenario. There's a lot of reasons for it. We can try to preserve some of our beach bungalows. It's really horrible what we see being done down here in the name of development. Our beach bungalows, this is like Park Avenue property in Pacifica right now with Airbnb. And with, you know, people from Europe and other parts of the world, they appreciate what we look at and say, oh, look at that. They look at our beach huts and go, how cute. Let me take a picture. I want to come back. I mean, we got a lot to offer. Regulating this is absolutely the best thing that's Pacifica can do. Regulate it to our benefit. Not outside landlords, not wealthy few among us, but thinking about the whole community and everybody. So, thank you.
And then Sheldon, did you want to speak?
Thanks again. I want to thank everybody, and this was very helpful and enlightening. We have done short-term rental. We have strict quiet, it's in our house, so we're careful. Airbnb screens people very carefully. We have strict quiet hours, we have fire extinguishers, and we provide off-street parking. I think regulating it would be great. I'd love to be, we tried when we first started, we contacted the city, we said, are there rules? And they kind of said, they shrugged. And then we contacted them again, and we never got very, I don't know why, but never got, I'd love to have a simple way to pay taxes. I'd love to have, get a business license. I think that would all be great. I think it's a great thing. And I think that that would be a process that would protect a lot of the problems that people fear, which is overtaxing parking, requiring, you know, all our neighbors are happy. We check with our neighbors. We were very careful. We don't want our neighbors to dislike us. And I think it's, I would love more regulation. I know not many business owners would say that, but I'm a big fan of it. And I'm looking forward to the council coming up with a simple, you know, for small businesses, business license. I like the business license, and either if Airbnb won't pay the taxes, just say, okay, you've got a business license, here's how you do the taxes. That would be great.
Sheldon, what neighborhood, you said you run an Airbnb, right?
We have, yeah.
Short-term. What neighborhood are you in?
We're in the Manor area.
Manor, okay. And then you host it, meaning you live in the property as well as?
Yeah, we live there. We are renting some spare, just as one of the council members mentioned, renting a couple of spare, we have a spare bedroom. We only rent to one family or one group at a time. We provide off-street parking, because we have two parking spots, and we give them one parking spot. We do have fire extinguishers, we do have a professional fire. In addition to having smoke detectors in every room, we also have a fire alarm system that we have an outside company monitor. We have, just the other day, we moved something into the hallway, so we had to move something out to make sure there was sufficient egress. So, there's like a big wide area to make sure that we're very conscious of all of that. And we just do that because we want to be conscious. But if you check, Airbnb, you know, provides a million-dollar liability policy. If someone, we have separate insurance, but Airbnb also has a million-dollar liability that we don't rely upon. We have our own, like, $2 million umbrella policy, so if anybody injures themselves, you know, because we want to be responsible. And as I said, we contacted the city at least twice to try to find out about it. And, okay, you know, city clerks are city clerks, they're not, their job is not to be my lawyer. But we really do think it's important, and I think clear regulation would be great. I think all of us would appreciate that, who want to do it, who have done it in the past or going to do it in the future. I think it would be a great, great thing.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to make a comment? Okay, bringing it back to council. So, do we want to go down to the slides of the exact questions you want answered? John has something.
Let me comment or question first. So, once we collect tax or regulate these short-term rentals, I wonder if we're sort of liable for enforcing health and safety regulations like the fire regulations. I realize you're not an attorney.
I'd want to double-check that question and report back to the council.
But that's a question for sure.
Bridget?
I just kind of wanted to make a comment. Jeffrey, I am with you. I am very concerned about the fabric of our neighborhood. I use the example of my next-door neighbor who probably does six- or one-month leases on a house of five gentlemen that live there. And, man, it stinks. It stinks for me, because I don't know who's coming and going. I don't know who's parking out front. I'm going in and out of the house with my daughter, and I like to say hi to everyone. So, if that were to be converted to an Airbnb, that could happen every week. But at the same time, I think we have to evolve. But I also think that we do need to be considerate of, the difference between East Sharp Park and renting here in Airbnb is a lot different than renting in Valimar or on Terranova Boulevard, because people are walking their dogs, they're walking their children to and from school. Down here, people come from San Francisco, they come from the East Bay. I used to live around the block here. I mean, I knew a ton of people every single day, but I didn't know a ton of people every single day. And I knew people who came from South City every single day. And you'd always hear, you know, different languages down here. And that was what made this place so awesome. So, I want to recognize the fact that Valimar neighborhood is a lot different than East Sharp Park and Lindemar. And there are, you know, we've got Dreamforce coming up, which is a Salesforce convention, which you can't get a hotel for, you can't get a hotel in the East Bay. So, people are renting in Pacifica, they're renting their house out for big dollars for the week, because it's so close to the city, it's so close to BART, and it's affordable, and you get a great vacation place. So, it's a double-edged sword, and I just want to acknowledge, Jeffrey, that I'm with you. I feel your pain, because I live it every day, and I don't know who's parking out front, I don't know. And I try to, you know, I always try to be friendly, so I want to just make sure that we're all considerate of that too. I don't know how, but we'll see.
I was also, based on that same comment, so I was wondering if there's any, I believe the police department can keep track of calls to a house. And would we be able to incorporate that to revoke a permit or notify Airbnb that this is an issue?
So, I think I saw the police chief arrive, but while...
I think I saw him back, I see, oh, I see his shoulder pads, that's right.
I did, while the chief was out last week, I did talk to Captain Spanheimer about this question, and so maybe the chief can neither agree or disagree. I asked whether or not there's been an increase in calls for services associated with Airbnb or, you know, short-term rentals. And he had said that that's not really the way the statistics are kept. It's like, they don't go in and say, oh, I'm going to mark this as this was apparently a short-term rental. But anecdotally, he didn't think that there was an increase.
And to the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware of any increase in calls for service because of Airbnb. When we classify our calls, we don't classify, we don't have a classification for Airbnb. What we can do, though, is if there, if we start receiving neighborhood complaints about a certain residence or a business, just like, you know, any other thing, we can check by address. So, if the city becomes aware of a problem residence that's running an Airbnb, and we were asked to produce data about that specific residence and complaints that have come in, yes, I could produce a report that details the calls for service and the disposition of the calls for a specific location. for service and the disposition of the calls for a specific location.
Maybe I'd like to consider that as part of our ordinance, if we do that.
Yeah, to Mike's point, would, would that be, would we be able to use that to revoke their permit or license or whatever?
We can certainly write that into an ordinance, yes.
Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, so staff, put up the slide so we can answer the questions.
Yeah, I think a number of questions have already been covered, but we can certainly go through them.
Can we go back to the first slide, sorry? So I, we've heard a lot of, a lot of conversation tonight. And so we certainly have heard that we want to tax them. But do we want light regulation, heavy regulation? When I, when I see heavy regulation, I think of potentially discretionary permits, a strict registration and inspection program. And so I just want to get an idea of where the council is thinking that they'd like to go.
I think my question a few minutes ago sort of bears on that, though. If, if we say, okay, we're, we're in favor of light regulation, but it turns out that we're liable for the health and safety-
Right.
-then that becomes a little heavier regulation.
Do you know how many are unhosted in, you know, have you anecdotally heard from other cities about issues with unhosted versus hosted?
I, did we have a, an idea from 21 Elements?
Yeah, we're not necessarily addressing that question, but there is a table that details the way that the units are operated. So it details whether the unit is rented as an entire home, a private room, or a shared room. So for Pacifica, the majority of the rentals are for entire homes, 41 of which, private rooms, 29, and then shared rooms, just two. So you could potentially infer from that data that if it's a private room or a shared room, the likelihood is that that would be hosted. For the entire room, it doesn't break it down as to something, whether it would be an ADU or whether it's an individual home.
And just to clarify, hosted versus unhosted is during the short-term rental stay.
Right.
So somebody could maybe go on a vacation, and they decide, well, while I'm gone, I'm going to go ahead and rent my house. So that is unhosted, even though that family lives there the vast majority of the year. And a hosted rental is when you have somebody who is actually, you know, in situ, in the house and renting a room.
Okay, so that's actually something we might want to consider, is to what, what's a trigger point for a license? Okay, let's say couples retired, they go on a three-week cruise, they rent their house off for the three weeks. You know, does that trigger, you know, let's say, $150 registration fee and, you know, tot tax, bed tax, and all of that?
What-
Just Lorenzo, how much is our business license fee? Just, how's that determined?
There are a number of categories that we'll probably have to create a separate category just for these, these entities. And the categories are driven by the amount of income that is reported by the entity. So while I would love to give you an easy answer, it's a pretty long list of industries, and each industry is taxed a little differently. But my guess is we'll-
Could you give us a range?
Huh?
Can you give us a range for, sort of, maybe like small B&Bs or something like that?
Well-
I know it's difficult.
It is difficult. You know, our TOT typically is between 1.6 and 1.7 million. That number is driven by a small number of entities.
Right.
And that's about as vague as I want to be on that.
Okay.
Right, but the, but the business license tax would be different for-
Yes, it would be.
-obviously for hotels, then.
Yeah.
And then-
But regardless of you went for three weeks or one day, you would still have to get a business license.
Well, that's something we can write into the ordinance, yes or no?
Right, right.
My feeling is that everything you'd want, the tax. But there may be a difference in the level of, on the zoning side, on the level of permitting that you'd want for somebody who's got only a very small number of days per year that they're, they're doing the Airbnb.
So in other words, you're suggesting different zoning regulations for a small number versus a large?
No, I was just trying to differentiate between the zoning regulations versus the business license section of the municipal code.
Okay. Yeah, so for light regulation, you know, if we were to direct staff to pursue that option, I'd, I'd also, like, I'd want a checkpoint, you know what I mean? I don't want this to be, but, but light regulation would, would, would require, any regulation, would that require an ordinance?
Yes.
Any regulation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I think initially I'm kind of in favor of more of a lighter regulation, but like a serious checkpoint on, on, I don't know, it's like six months or a year, on staff time, police involvement, complaints, and seriously taking into consideration those, you know, and consider revising.
See, I kind of agree with you, but like if you get into a conversion, I would want heavy regulation, because this is most likely unhosted. They're taking housing stock off the market, and it's basically a hotel. So I would almost think that we'd want heavy regulation if the guy is doing a conversion, you know, if he has four units and two of them are Airbnb or short-term rentals, then he's kind of running a hotel. And he should be under the same rules and regs as a hotel.
And you, you can, most of our apartments are in a different zoning district than single-family homes. So we can draft an ordinance that is going to treat those areas differently. So you could have an R3, which is the high-density residential district, that does not permit short-term rentals. Because you, your intention, if this is the way the council wants to go, the intention is that those remain as, you know, full-time apartment leases.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Yeah, that's, that's an attractive option. One thing I would say is, on the light regulation, is that, and I've said it before, the limit to the number of days per year, I'm, I think I'm not in favor of that. Because I think of the VRBO where my sisters stayed about, you know, four or five years ago. And it was right on the ocean, just, just down there. And, you know, it was obvious that, that it was unhosted year-round. And that was, that was the business that they did. But to Mike's point, if we consider that sort of a conversion of sorts and regulate it maybe more heavily, for example, the fire, health and safety stuff, yeah.
Well, those big, I'm not trying to pick on any one individual, but those big apartments on Talbit are entirely different than most of the, you know, four units down here. You know what I mean? So I think those should be like a regular hotel, because they are just big buildings with a lot of rooms. Maybe, okay, but I kind of feel that maybe we should allow someone, let's say a four-unit building, have a maximum percentage of short-term rentals, maybe one, you know, 25% or something like that. Because this is just me thinking out loud, I don't know what, I see two heads shaking.
We're studying.
Yeah, I know. I see two heads shaking. And I hear Sue's not doing anything.
Sue's scowling.
So, yeah.
I, I think that has some merit, if, again, if it's legal. Yeah.
Right, okay, so the-
It's almost like we have to map out each different type of rental, right? So you would have two different zones at least, right?
Mm-hmm.
Two different zones at least. And then, is a single family the same as a, as a four-plex?
No, it'd be different zoning districts.
So it's three different zones, right?
Yeah.
So it'd be three different zones. And then, it's almost like we would need a matrix, I would feel like I would need a matrix, to just visually say, these are the types, these are the zones, these are what they mean, this is what would be allowable or not allowable. So it's almost like a light to heavy regulation, and we would walk through it that way, almost.
Does that sound like something-
Yes.
-that's enforceable?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, we can do that. We would, we would need to analyze how much staff time it would take to enforce it, or the cost of hiring one of these agencies to assist us with, with the enforcement. And so we would need to come back to you guys with that information.
Actually, that reminds me, there was one, one of the speakers asked, how come we hadn't looked to enforce this before? Is there was so much litigation, we didn't want to be the pioneer with the arrows in the back and all the legal bills. So we're just the guy, the farmer afterwards, picking up what's left, right? You know? Because now the litigation's settled, the rules are set, and we can move forward. So, does it, do you have guidance from what you need, or?
Yes, there's a few more slides.
Just before we leave this one.
Do you guys have something to say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't put your light on, I'm sorry.
I know, it's a study session.
But regarding-
I don't, I don't know how heavy that we want to regulate. I sort of think your idea of doing a yearly amount, because if someone gets to 90 days and the regulation says you can't rent more than 90 days, are they going to not rent? We're just not going to get paid. Because they get to that certain point, and they don't want to pay us anymore because, oh my gosh, I'm going to go afoul of the law. So I'm not going to pay you anymore. So then we're limiting the amount we could make. As far as like high-density buildings, I mean, maybe 50% of the building. I don't know. But I would also like to ask some people who have Airbnb, VRBOs, if they would pay like a set yearly fee and that's it. Because like you said, that would be easier for staff to do, and that would be less regulation. So I've just said like, lot less, more.
What's your definition of high-density?
Oh.
See, I kind of look at-
Like 12 units?
12 units or more, something like that. Because, see, I think there's a big difference regulating something like what's up on Talbit-
Mm-hmm.
-versus, you know-
Like a four-unit building?
Yeah, four-unit, five-unit building. I think there's just a big difference there. And if they want to convert, you know, I don't know how many units are in those buildings, but if, like-
Always they wanted to convert.
If they wanted to convert that entire thing to, you know, the Talbit Hotel, you know what I mean? It's-
Well, then they're a hotel.
Yeah.
I mean, I was thinking about like a four-unit building. Let them rent out two, but keep two.
You're, you're open to the percentage type of thing.
Okay. I wanted to switch gears a little bit and say something about the tax. And I think, I think a yearly tax is, is really kind of hopeless, because individual situations will vary so much. Because there will be people that, that just rent it out while they're going on vacation, and then there's other people that, that make a business out of it. So I think we're, we're stuck with the, with the TOT tax. But I would like to investigate, for you to investigate, whether VRBO, HomeAway, Airbnb, and so on, will collect the tax for us. It seems to me that that's the simplest in terms of staff time.
I just looked it up while we were here. And Airbnb specifically says, we will not collect the tax for you. The owner must collect the tax themselves and send it in. I checked on VRBO, they collect the tax, they pay it to the owner. So they do collect a tax from the, from the occupant.
But they pay it to the owner.
But they pay it to the owner.
Okay, so those, those sound like not viable options. Shut down immediately.
They might collect it, I don't know. I just was checking in previous things.
Yeah. Did you have something to say to that?
Oh, no, nothing to add.
Okay.
Any comments from Keith, or?
You just want to be very careful about using the word tax, like on the annual thing, because an annual tax would be subject to a vote, right? And if it's a fee, we're kind of limiting what we can get in revenues. So we always, I think, want to apply this on a TOT basis.
Right.
And again-
Good point.
-we should be able to make sure that we, that we collect all the TOT we can if we're allowing short-term rentals. And if we have to negotiate with, you know, Airbnb or other entities to make sure that we get that, that's what we should do, I believe.
Well, so the best option would be for Airbnb and HomeAway and VRBO to collect for us. If they won't do that, and it sounds like they might not, we need sort of a Plan B. And, you know, those companies like Mike was talking about that will do all that for you, might be an option.
We don't after them, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they're going to take a cut of it, so.
Yeah, so we need to, now that we, now that we have council direction, we need to contact some of these agencies and see what their cost is.
Yeah, but their cost would have to be on top of the TOT. So we would collect the full amount of the TOT. We would have to, I think, under the law. And, and they would charge, you know, a percentage above that for their service.
Services.
Right?
Well, that'd be the goal. We'd obviously be subject to negotiating with any, any entity we entered into an agreement with, subject to council approval. So these are just things we need to research.
Where do you give their input here?
Mr. Mayor?
I don't know who's talking. Oh, Lorenzo, sorry.
I just, I wanted to come back to you. I've been able to access the city's municipal code and look at our business tax provisions. Typically, we have a minimum fee of somewhere between $40 and $50. However, for entities that are generating revenues under $25,000, however, for those entities that are generating revenues over $25,000, there's another per-thousand-cent charge. It, I think it maxes out right now at 77 cents, and it can go lower. So again, we've got a number of categories for our business license. Once we sort of establish the parameters for what council wants to do as far as regulation, we'll try to hone in on a number and try to give you an estimate of what the business tax, business license revenue would be. Okay? So, and I also wanted to give you some context. We generate about 1.6 to 1.7 in TOT. But we generate as a city somewhere around $400,000 in business license revenue. All right? So just wanted to give you some context.
Yeah.
Okay?
One other thing that, that hasn't been mentioned so far is what other cities are doing. Well, I guess it has, a little bit, but not in any depth of how they're collecting and what level of regulation they're engaging in. Yeah, so, might be useful.
Okay, so I guess we're ready for the next, thank you, Lorenzo.
Sure.
I think we're ready for the next slide.
Thank you. So I think we've already essentially answered these questions. The question number two is asking whether there's a different degree of regulation depending on the zoning district. And we've already mentioned that, for example, our one, single-family home district, you'd like to see- our one single-family home district, uh, you, you'd like to see recommendations for that to be regulated differently from, uh, maybe an R3 multifamily district.
Or the three zones, right?
Right, a- as well as the coastal zone may, may have something different, too.
Uh, the, um, potential limits, uh, the example, uh, in the presentation is for the number of days, uh, and that's already been discussed.
How, how does the coastal zone differ? I mean, so, um...
It, it may not be different because, uh, because of the type of regulation you guys are discussing. I think if, if you were leaning towards not allowing them, the coastal zone might be just different.
Okay.
Um, so there's, uh, the council's indicated that, in terms of regulation, the, uh, areas such as percentages, uh, for apartment buildings, regulating parking, um, and regulating the atten- the intensity of units depending on the available space. So at, at this point, if there's, maybe if there's anything to add, or whether you'd like me to continue through the, uh, through the rest of the questions? Would you like to add additional comments to this slide, or I can continue through the remaining questions?
Yeah, continue.
If this is the place to address parking, um, I think, uh, we should consider, um, requiring off-site parking.
On-site or off-site?
On-site, I'm sorry.
Or at least compliance with whatever the ADU, uh...
See, there is none for ADUs.
Yeah.
No, my, no, my, my point is that we're going to be, it's going to come before council soon.
Right.
So my recommendation would be that if we are going to require onsite parking, that we also leave an option available for, um, wha- whatever the ordinance comes about for the ADUs. If it does, whatever, you know, say, planning recommends, like, I, I think they're going to recommend anything that's less than 20, wider than 26 feet, uh, any street that's wide on 26 feet ca- cannot have an ADU. So something like that, I, I don't know what it is, I'm just, again, throwing it out there, that, that we should consider trying to at least be fair to whatever's happening with, with the parking situation with ADUs, because you could have an ADU, and you can have an Airbnb, and you can have in a hosted environment. So that's a lot more, and I know, I know Councilmember Vatalas is going to tell me that she could rent out all five of her rooms if she wants, but that doesn't make me any happier or less happier. I'm just saying, if we're going to limit parking to onsite parking, then you should do the same thing for ADUs, or something like that.
I would, I would propose that a single parcel cannot have both an ADU or an STR. Just for, okay, because ADUs, we have very little discretion on, we can't limit parking, et cetera, if I'm correct, right?
Certain ones, certain areas.
Okay, okay.
And the recommendation that's going to come to us is that, uh, ADUs, uh, cannot be short-term rentals.
Right.
Isn't that right?
Right.
Right, but there's nothing that I've heard stopping somebody from building something in the backyard as an ADU and then renting out a room in the main house.
Right, so...
Therefore, you have two parkings, right?
Yeah.
Two parkings. Accessory dwelling units. It's the new state regulations that just came out.
Yeah.
And we have very little discretion on those. That's, yeah.
So, so the, the, the recommendation that will be coming to you, one, says that AD, as we discussed, ADUs cannot be used as short-term rentals. It, two, says that the, um, the parcel needs to be owner-occupied when the ADU is rented. So, to answer your question, unless we build in another regulation, it is possible that you have an ADU that's being rented, the owner living in the main dwelling unit, and the owner having a bedroom that is a short-term rental. So if that is a situation you'd like us to address, we, we can, we can.
What's the...
So if, if we just address it as part of, um, uh, the larger picture and say, uh, if you, if you have a short-term rental, you've got to have, um, off-street parking space, right? It, we can do that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so we aren't limited like we are with ADUs.
Right, I would do that within the context of the short-term rental ordinance, not the, not the ADU.
Right, right.
But I think, I think, um, I understand Councilmember Martin's point is that she's, I think she's saying that the analysis is applicable regarding the parking, um...
Yeah.
To, to the short-term rental. And if the, there's a health-safety issue with adding parking demand because of an ADU with, in these certain areas, that that may, it, that may apply as well to, uh, having short-term rentals in those areas.
But if we require short-term rentals to have off-street parking, that obviates the whole situation, right?
I...
I, I, I'm gonna, I think that, I think that's going to be very difficult. Because you could rent out four of your rooms, and you can't have four extra spaces. You won't have it, then you can only rent out one of your rooms, I get it, but...
Yeah.
I mean, I just think then we're really limiting, we're really limiting the evolution of how this is supposed to work. I know I'm saying two different things, but it is...
Sue Vatalas?
You mentioned the 26-foot-wide streets, and if you limit, um, short-term rentals to streets larger than 26 feet, is that what you were saying? Then you eliminate all of Pedro Point.
Yeah.
And probably Valamar and Rockaway.
Probably Valamar, um...
And Rockaway.
Rockaway Beach.
Uh, Sharp Park.
Those are all the neighborhoods that are neighborhoods. I'm not, I'm not like advocating for it, but, but there's something to it.
Every neighborhood is a neighborhood.
There's something to it, I mean, yeah, I get it. My street's like, uh, it's got to be 500 feet wide, that everybody could have, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not advocating for it, but all those neighborhoods that you mentioned are neighborhoods that I've heard complaints about the fabric changing because of Airbnb.
Okay, can you tell me exa- oh, I was just going to ask her what she's heard so far, so we know what the basis of this discussion is?
For the parking?
Yeah.
And the street width and all that?
So you, the council has asked us for more analysis on, um, the requirement for parking spaces associated with short-term rentals, and to also look into, um, the applicability of the analysis done for street widths on ADUs, and how that could be applicable to short-term rentals as well.
I think that's okay. I think that's a good recom- I mean, when, there's, it's just going to be a recommendation. It's take the analysis that's already been done, mix it with some stuff that's already being done out there, and then come back to us and let us do the same thing again. Maybe it's not a study session, but...
But, okay, can we, okay, an issue with that, and I think we need to get clarification on, is, okay, just like there's a lot of Airbnbs up in, um, Pedro Point, we now pass a rule that says no street less than 26 feet can have a, a short-term rental. What happens with those existing ones up there? Are the, is this effective that you have to register by this date? Is it retroactive, the ordinance? Or are we stopping those that are there?
In this, at this, the different side of that same coin is that if we go with you have to have off-street parking, there's a lot of places in Pedro Point that don't have o- off...
They don't have house parking through the off-street.
That's my point.
So, I'm just asking about the retroactivity of the law.
They would not be grandfathered in, so they would not be able to, if that, if that ordinance is passed, they'd not, would not be able to continue.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just...
And what if you're on a one, one-way street? They're not going to be 26 feet wide on a one-way street. They may have parking, like Mike Bell said, but he's on a small street. He has available parking. So are we going to limit him from renting it out, because he has available parking, but his street's not wide enough?
Right, no, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking for that, that information to be used.
Keith is coming down from Mount Sinai now.
So I want to, I want to, uh, predict the future a little bit. Trying to deal with parking can be, quite a nightmare. I was city manager in Lawndale, which was in LA County, which is a city of, that's different than Pacifica, but 1.9 square miles, 33,000 population. The city was planned and laid out before it was incorporated by LA County in the 30s and 40s. 25-foot lots in many cases, single-car garages, because that was the way the world was back then. And then in the 1990s and first decade of 2000, people had much bigger vehicles, uh, people had more vehicles, and, you know, while you can allow Airbnb or short-term rentals, it still, uh, doesn't change the fact that people can have a lot of cars for those other houses on that street. And while you may have a regulation that says you can't allow an Airbnb unless they have off-street parking, how do you regulate that they use the off-street parking? And the way we tried to deal with that with these units in Lawndale, or at least experimented with it, was doing a residential parking permit system, which caused another layer of problems and such. One size doesn't fit all with the guard to parking on residential streets. Now, just caution you with trying to figure out a way to kind of put the square peg in the round hole, it's always going to be difficult.
And then, I had the chief look at a permit parking situation that was requested from some people, and it wa- and it was not pretty. It was not pretty. Yeah, you had no gray hair before it, right? Yeah. Okay, so I guess we'll just leave, no, this is my, I, I suggest we just leave it as what you've read, and we'll see what comes out of the bottle.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so...
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm not sure I heard the three things from Rob right. You mentioned, uh, something, and then intensity and parking. I don't know what you had before that for direction from the council.
It was for the apartment buildings, um, establishing if there is a p- a percentage of an apartment building that may be given over to short-term rentals.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just scared that if we don't address it, you know, all of a sudden we'll have a hole in apartment building converting.
I, I think we really have to protect the apartment buildings. Yeah.
Stock.
Yeah.
Okay, any, another slide?
Uh, so the council direction requested for number three was, um, uh, where regulation is required, is there any ways that certain forms of regulation can be administered through, uh, uh, different forms of application process?
Oh, did you forget the D?
What?
Administrational, administral, or, uh, as a ministerial?
Ministerial.
It's correct.
It works. Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were just speaking English.
It's old English.
Um, so, basically, this is asking, do you want, however we end up coming out of this in terms of regulation, do you want this to be, you know, a simple, come to City Hall, get registered, follow the rules? Or do you want this to be, you got to notice your neighbors, you got to have a public hearing, which is going to be a lot more staff time? But I think that, you know, we, we'd like to hear from you on whether or not that's something that the council wants to implement.
I, I favor the, um, the ministerial regulation.
Me, too. Because we're doing the public information now, right? So you're talking about ongoing, once we finally determine what we feel is fair.
Yes.
I think, yeah, I kind of agree, just like if they want to, you can, you can permit certain additions just over the counter.
You, you know, in terms of staff time also, um, that's, that's a big savings.
Can we also, you know, add, I don't know, like a courtesy clause or something that says like, it would be really nice if you let your neighbors know this is what's going on next door to your house?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And the council direction on number four, um, was really trying to establish the difference between a hosted rental and an un- un-hosted rental, and whether there should be a difference in the way that they are both regula- either are regulated.
So I think we, we have direction from you guys on that.
And what was it?
Um, so, I, I, I actually think that you, you guys are, um, wanting to treat them all similarly.
Yeah.
Um, and not, and not treating them differently.
Okay.
Although, I would suggest that on the form they fill out, you know, we obviously, that there is contact information for the owner, you know what I mean, that would, on an un-hosted one, and/or a management company, if there's a management company involved.
Okay.
Where to call, where to call if there's problems?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
And they pretty much know that, too, when they're there.
And so point number five was whether we should investigate, um, with Airbnb and VRBO as examples, the collection of TOT, and, um, it sounds like you'd like us to do that investigation, and if there's an opportunity, then...
Yes.
It might also be good as in an un-hosted one, that we have some sort of requirement for signage of, like, in case of emergency, dial 911, you know what I mean, or closest hospital. That just, you know, because you're dealing with people from out of the area, that they should be able to...
Yeah, it falls in the health and safety.
Yeah.
And then number six, I think, was just a catch-all, if there's anything else. And, uh, as I'm listening to the conversation, I, I have a question that I'd like to pose to the city attorney, and I wanted to check in with you guys, and that is, you know, I'm hearing we are going to regulate, um, this isn't a ban situation, we have a separate section of the code that allows us to collect the tax, and because this is such a, um, a meaty issue, can we do the tax part on separate tracks and maybe get that going separately? Um, the question for me is, that may mean you collects it, collect a tax on a unit that may ultimately end up not being allowed, let's say on a sm- on a, on a narrow street, just as an example, because we talked about that. So is there a comfort level, is that okay? And, and, you know, I will check in with the city attorney on that, and then through the city manager, figure out a way to che- to communicate to you guys what, what I found out.
That would be okay with me, you know, if it's legal.
When could we, what's the earliest, like, tax could start, January 1st, or?
You know, I think that there's a, a mission that needs to be done, but I am not sure exactly when the earliest could be, so...
Well, I did just wonder, is there a 90-day period, 30-day, or?
Not for an existing tax.
We need to get an application, we need to get an application.
I think this will be a topic of discussion at tomorrow morning's executive team meeting, and we can follow up and let you folks know.
It, it, my, my, I mean, my thought is that it's not going to be anytime soon, we have to get a hosted application probably set up if we're going to be the ones that have to, somebody has to learn it, and...
Right, I just was...
I, I think our target is the same as yours, which is, we'd like to do that as soon as possible.
Okay, so, is that conclude?
Yes.
Uh, want to hear from public comments one more time? And is there any everybody from the public that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I...
Thanks, staff.
Close, yes, thank you.
Thank you, staff, very much.
And I really appreciate having a separate study session versus just part of another meeting.
Yeah, this was great.
This is a heavy issue.
Very heavy issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, public, for coming.
Good job on the roll call, too.
Turned? I think you did.
That was good information, too.
You know, now you saw the real deal, you know, up close, you can, you can handle it.